Well, good afternoon. Welcome to the work session for Greeley Evans School District Six. Today is August 12th, 2024. This is our first meeting of the 2024-2025 school year. This work session will now come to order, and Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll for us, please?
Director Ozari.
Present.
Director Bentley.
Present.
Director Campos Spitsi.
Present.
Director Mash. Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood.
Present.
Director Sullivan. Five board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon, and I'll just say that Ms. Mash is excused because she is taking her daughter to college. Right now, moving her into a dorm, and so Ms. Sullivan is feeling under the weather, and she may be joining us remotely. So, that's where everyone is, and we will proceed with our calendar review and community engagement. So I'll let board members take a look at that. Just a few things I'll draw your attention to. First, the DLT kickoff meeting is on the 21st. Also, Fred Charter School of Innovation Ribbon Cutting and Open House is on the 21st. Then, Dream Team Community of Champions Breakfast is on the 12th, and then we have a Greeley Philharmonic Orchestra Play It Forward Breakfast on the 23rd. Besides that, a lot of it is our normal board meetings and work sessions. Is there anything that should be on there that is not on there? Mr. Norwood? You should. Yeah, go ahead.
We're just going through the 23rd because I saw on the calendar that we're... The 25th is the Northridge 25th Anniversary Homecoming.
Correct. I think we're just going to the 23rd because that's our board meeting, but yes, the 25th will be the 25th Anniversary of Northridge. So, that'll be a big event as well. Any anything else that needs to be on there? All right. Please, we do need your attendance. Please mark your attendance at the kickoff meeting, the ribbon cutting, Dream Team Community of Champions Breakfast. Some of those, make sure that Ms. Lemon knows whether you plan to attend or not, and if you if you plan to attend and say you're going to attend, please, please do attend. Next on our agenda is our board retreat dates. So, Dr. Pilch, I'm gonna... I think I'm handing this to you to give us some ideas for for dates for board retreats.
Thank you, President Matthews, and I think that Ms. Lemon had polled board members. Do you have any of that data, Ms. Lemon, or should I just proceed?
If you could just proceed, I will pull up what I have. There's just a few days that wouldn't work for a couple of people, but then Wednesdays and Thursdays looked good for others.
Yeah, so what we heard back was Wednesdays and Thursdays were best, and so I think we're looking at a full day as a possibility after President Matthews, after you and Vice President Mash and I met, we talked about the possibility of a full day and talked about the possibility of spending some of that day on the Strength Finder and then also spending some of that day on if there are other pieces that you all are interested in as board members that we come back and discuss that might require a little bit longer time for discussion, like a work session would allow. So I think we're looking at probably an eight to three or so day, and I think what we most need to know from you is if there... If you have actual days that you are not able to do that here in September, we'd like to know that so that we can begin to think about the work session. We were looking at September 11th. I'm wondering if that is a possibility? Does anybody have a conflict on September 11th, or would that be a work? I saw Mr. Norwood's face. What does that mean, Mr. Norwood?
That's... I can probably work around it, but that's usually one of my biggest and busiest days in my business. If I can...
Would you like to... Is it better for you if we try to push a little later, say into October?
Or even if I can work longer on Wednesdays, I can have Thursdays and Fridays open. But if it's the 11th and that works for everybody else, I'll find a way to make it work.
I will say Thursdays and Fridays are the hardest days for me.
My boss is pretty cool.
Your boss is pretty flexible, Mr. Bentley?
Mine's not. Mine's not, so...
What were the other options? Dr. Pilch, can?
I'm going there. Then, if Thursdays and Fridays are not an option, are hard, then I think we could look out yet another month to October 23rd, which is a Wednesday also, though, Mr. Norwood.
That might be better.
October 30th is a possibility as well.
23rd, hopefully things will start slowing down.
I'd really like to see all of us get here this time. Our last few work sessions, we haven't had all seven board members present the entire time, so I think it'd be really good if we can, you know, find a date that everybody really can get to, especially if we're gonna do the Strength Finder and try and do a little bit deeper board work. I'd like to try to get us all here.
Dr. Pilch, whatever works for everybody, the 11th or the 23rd, I'll make it work.
Do you... Do any of you have... The rest of you have conflicts on October 23rd or October 30th?
Yeah, both... Open both days.
Yeah, I don't think so. Remind me again when our fall break is, though.
Our fall break is, I believe, the week of... Well, we don't... Is that September 21st day? So it'd be the 18th, September 18th and September 21st.
Okay.
And there's also a Casby Fall Conference Delegate Assembly that weekend, if any of you are interested in that.
I think the 23rd works for me.
So when we check with Mrs. Sullivan and see if October 23rd or October, if not the 23rd, if October 30th could work and consider October 23rd as a possible full-day work session for us. How does that sound?
Sounds good. I'm sorry, I've lost my agenda. I don't know where it went on all the open pens.
So, the next... Item is board member comments.
Board member comments and reports. Let's... We'll start with Mr. Ozari.
Thank you, President Matthews. Just three things. On July 24th, I had the opportunity to attend the Shack Committee Day Meeting. I was only there for an hour and a half or so, but very impressed by the work of the students, their maturity level, and their sponsors. And for those of you that went to the Backpack Kickoff Event, you may have seen them at work with their smoothie bikes. I had a chance to ride one of those myself, and I make a pretty good smoothie, to be honest with you. And we're trying to get those out to all the schools in some ways, and of course, the Student Health Advisory Committee is concerned about student mental health and also how the cellphone issue will be impacting the schools and how our policies surrounding that will help abate that. I'd like to give a shout out to Teresa and her team for the Backpack Kickoff and all the administrators and staff of the district. I was very impressed by the event once again and the number of people. I talked with the first person in line. I think they got there at 5:15, and I talked with several other folks, probably hundreds, to be honest with you, and it just seemed to be a very positive event that day. I might be wrong, but that's how it came off to me. It seemed folks were very, very happy with it. And then finally, I'd like to thank the Success Foundation for Friday Fest, Judy Hill, John Shuttler, Neil Kingman, and others who have volunteered their time to help this school district along the lines of music instruments in this case. So that's all I have. Thank you, President Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Ozari. Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, not much to report on my end, just normal summer shenanigans, trying to balance work and life and all that stuff. Doesn't feel like two months since we've been here, but it went fast, so glad to be back, went to a normal routine and excited for the school year.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Mr. Norwood?
Well, it was a busy summer as well, as I'm slowly creeping up to that golden age of 70. I'm gonna start to slow down next year, but it's been very busy. I've been very blessed. I do have a very a good business, so I'm busy working this summer. I did see something, and I'm sure that I'm not the first one that saw this, but for any teachers that are out there, to remind them to go to donorschoose.org to get supplies. They're giving away $2.7 million of supplies, so you can apply if you do that, so. And I did get a chance to get to the backpack giveaway, and I was fortunate to find a couple of stray children and bring them to Teresa and her crew and get them reconnected with their parents, so. But it, again, after being there and seeing that the number of people that were there for the physicals, the number of people there for the backpacks, there's definitely a need in our community, and I hope the community continues to step up and support this because that's a wonderful, wonderful event for our students and their families.
Thank you, Mr. Norwood. Dr. Campos Spitsy?
So just a couple of things. This year is different for me because I'll be putting my oldest in kindergarten on Thursday, so really excited about her starting at Meker Elementary at their new dual-language immersion program. I happened to glance at the lunch menu this morning, and unfortunately, she didn't start today because she's missing out on pupusas and birria. I was like, I wanna go just eat lunch at Meker. Anyway, this summer has been exciting for me. As many of you probably already know, I was appointed by the governor to be on the UNC Board of Trustees, partly because of my connection with being on the advisory board for the new UNC College of Medicine and partly because of this K-12 connection, and so I'm really excited about work at UNC to connect better with with our K-12 students here and excited about possibly building a pipeline for students interested in pre-health careers, starting somewhere in middle school through high school into UNC and into the College of Medicine, so. Those... I got to spend four hours this last Friday with a... In during a strategic planning meeting for the College of Medicine, and I wasn't even the one who brought up the pipeline. It was really cool to have other people get excited about that idea besides me. Friday, I also got to participate at Friday Fest and support the Success Foundation's efforts, raising money for musical instruments for our kids. And lastly, I... Dora and Ozari touched on mental health and how that was a focus of the Shack Student Group. Wanted to encourage, if anyone wants to read something, I picked up this book. I think Natalie Mash has probably already beat me to finishing it. I tried to check it out at the library, and it's like so on hold. There's like 50 people on the waitlist, so I ended up buying it at Midnight Oil, so support local businesses. It was recommended to us by one of our high school teachers. It talks about cellphones and their impact on this generation's mental health. So, excited about reading that and that we have this new task force that's looking at how we might be able to restrict cellphone use in high schools for the benefit of our students. This last summer, the Surgeon General decided to put a black box warning on social media because of its deleterious effects on mental health, and the LA Unified School District did a cellphone ban. They're the largest school district in the country, and they decided to ban cellphones in their high schools, so I'm glad that we have a task force that's looking at this and that will continue to study cellphone use and whether our new policies are making any difference.
Thank you, Dr. Campos Spitsy. And I'll start off saying congratulations on being appointed to the Board of Regents for UNC. That's quite an honor, so, and well deserved. So we're glad to see you in that position, and thank you for serving additionally in that way. I know you've committed a lot of time already to the community, and so thank you for for serving and representing the district in that way. Kudos to our communications team for the backpack giveaway and also the Success Foundation, which plays a critical role in setting that up. Julie Hill moved a lot of boxes on Friday. She's the director of the Success Foundation, but that is that is one of the best things that we do. I'm just amazed. Every year, I think we gave away 5,000 backpacks, and I see Teresa nodding. I kinda like doing this here where I can I can see you. And I think you said there were maybe 9,000 people there that day, and so to see so many of our students back and so many of our new administrators, so many of so much of our district and our community out, it's just a it's an amazing event. I encourage everyone, whether you need a backpack or not, to come out for that. That's so great job again. Is this the 10th year? It's the 11th year that we've done that, and so just a tremendous success. And then Dr. Pilch and I also got to serve on a, I don't know what it was, a round table of it was about the House Bill that passed recently that changed the way that school district funding, and also my sponsor, I'm sorry, didn't mean to leave you out of that, along with Representative Young. It was the four of us participating in the in the round table, but yeah, just talking about the way that schools were funded and the way that schools will be funded, and I said it before, but I'll say it again, that when we started looking at the our superintendent's accomplishments, and the list is very long, this is probably one that won't get enough attention because it's not something she necessarily did directly, but again, her efforts in that and changing this this formula really should not go unnoticed by this district and our board members because it makes a tremendous difference, not only for for this district. I think when it's all said and done, it will be an additional $18 million for District Six, but but impacts students around the state and funds our schools more equitably and meets the needs of our students. So appreciate, again, all your work on that, Dr. Pilch. And I think that's all, I think that's all I've got. So, we are on to our next item, and that is Board Committees, Ambassadors, School Visits, Required Trainings. So if you would get those documents out, or open those documents, and you can see our assignments, not much has changed. Dr. Pilch, is there anything you would like to say on this?
Well, I know December seems like a long ways off, but I think it's really helpful if you all can let Mrs. Lemon know as soon as possible about attending the Colorado Association of School Boards Conference, and if you plan to bring anyone with you to that conference. She can make those arrangements, and if we are not staying the whole time, then we can free up our rooms, and other school boards in other parts of the state that didn't get rooms at the conference location will be able to get rooms there. So, I mean, for the good of the larger order, please let us know your plans around the CASB Conference. We will plan to do a full-day work session while we are there on December 4th, assuming that's still the priority of the board to do that. We have not yet set up your school, or the school visits yet. Amy's still working on that, getting those set up with schools, but we should have those set up here in the next several days. Right now, principals are really focused on getting their schools open, as you can imagine. And so, it's not the time that they're worried about when we're going to be visiting their schools, but we'll get moving on that as quickly as we can. Just a reminder that board members don't schedule individual visits to buildings or meetings in schools. However, you know, if there's something you especially wanna see, or there's something you wanna get out for, don't hesitate to reach out, and Amy and I will get that on the calendar, and we'll include the other board members as well, so that you all have those opportunities, and get a similar experience to one another when it comes to our schools. I do wanna commend Mr. Ozari for being out on Friday. His, he knew through his wife that there was an opportunity to help Centennial get their building ready for school on Monday, and that is one of his ambassador schools. And so, he reached out to me and said, "Am I okay to go?" And I said, "Absolutely. I know they would appreciate having you as their ambassador, and to be there as a part of it." I know they, I was there this morning, they are very grateful, and the school looks great. It really looks good today. Then I would just also indicate that, you know, throughout the year, you mentioned it earlier, President Matthews, that it's important to respond to those calendar invites, but that's, we really build those table assignments and things at the different community events, based on your responses. And we know things come up after you've said yes. Sometimes things come up and you have to say no, but we usually always try to fill those seats with other folks here in the district, if you're not able to attend. So it's really important to let us know through those calendar invites on your plans. Let's see, you've got some of those biggest high-priority events listed there on the top page. I do wanna just say, and what we're kinda doing here is just giving a rundown as we're opening the school year, I know you all have heard all this stuff, but I do wanna say that I know our community enjoys seeing you all. They really do, and they enjoy visiting with you about your work in the district, and getting to know you better. And so, it does matter when we show up and we go to community events. They, community members appreciate that, I mean, they truly do. And you do represent District 6, and we appreciate all the time that you give to do that. We do, we will plan on negotiations again in February. We haven't set those dates yet, but it's typically three days, and we'll get them on the calendar as soon as we can, and then, and look, we're all ready to graduation ceremonies coming up on the calendar, which I know is our favorite part of the year, other than maybe when we're bringing students back, like this week. That too is our favorite time of year. I will have Ms. Lemon reaching out to you to set up at least monthly meetings with you, to check in with me, and to do the updates on the big things and the little things, and to hear what questions and concerns you may have. And then, as things come up that we need more time to discuss, we'll also schedule those times, and just know that I am certainly available to you all. If there are certain topics you want to visit about one-on-one, or a couple of you at a time with me, I will always make myself available for that. And then, just a couple of reminders on the back of that sheet, you know, that you have E-Week posted each week, typically on Friday or Saturday to review, and then, board materials are typically posted on Thursday afternoon. And then, just a reminder too, to frequently check and respond and read your district emails. When, and just a reminder that when emails are sent to multiple board members, the board president will typically respond on behalf of the board. Now, sometimes if you know the individual personally, I know you all feel like you should respond, and that is certainly appropriate, but I don't, we don't want you to feel like you have to respond to all those emails that each seven of you should have to respond. President Matthews, that's his job, that's what he gets the big bucks for, right?
That's right.
And then, again, just back to the calendar and responding to those invites as quickly as you can, and then letting us know if something comes up and you're not able, not able to be here. So, President Matthews, what else would you like me to cover here? I think you guys can see on the next page some of the big community events that folks like to see us at, and then, your board ambassador assignments. We did not make any changes to those, isn't that correct, President Matthews?
We did not.
I think we felt like the board had just had a shift in November, December of last year, and so we would keep those assignments the same for another year. The schools have started to provide you with the event, your ambassador schools have started to provide you with some of those events they would like to have you at, if you're available to attend. But we'll continue to fill that calendar up as those events come in from the school leaders, so that you can plan on attending. And then the committees are listed there. Also, on the back of page four, the district committees. We did not change committee assignments either. I will say that when Mr. Ozari was talking about Shack, that is the Student Health Advisory Committee. And I'll just spell that out for you. It's also work with the Wellness Committee in the district. So we do have, we do have a mandated district-wide Wellness Committee, and so, we also have participation on that, and you can see those committee assignments there, given to you again. And then finally, just another way to look at your ambassador assignments on that second to the last page there. And then we just, we provided you those board protocols that we all have worked on together over time. We provided that to you as well, just as reminders of our work and our work together, and the work that you all have agreed to, that we've all agreed to do. Do you have any questions for me, President Matthews? Anything else you want me to cover?
No, I would just, I wanna emphasize again the importance of attendance, and I've said this numerous times, but I'll say it, say it again. When I joined the board, I was the, I was the only person on the board who had a full-time job. And now I think Mr. Ozari is the only person on this board who doesn't have a full-time job. And so it's just, it is very tough for us to get to events, but we do need a presence at all events, and so we need everyone to try to get to as many events as we can, as we can get to. Obviously, these meetings are the most important, and they're those high-priority events, like Dr. Pilch talked about, school kickoff, and negotiations, and success in six, retirement celebration, graduations. And those are all big events. Our school visits are also big events. They're big events for our schools. I mean, they spend a lot of time getting ready for us. So, again, I know we are all busy. I know, you know, some of us have more flexibility with our schedules than, you know, some others, but let's work to try to get to as many events as we can, as Dr. Pilch said. Even those lunches and things, we, we, along with the superintendent, are the face of this district. We're the people that communicate with the public, and so, please, just be in touch with your calendar, and know what's coming up, and work to get to as many of those as we can, so that we always, we always have a presence. It just, it's, it's just not the same when there are two of us that end up showing up for a school, a school visit. You know, it just feels not quite the same for the school. And I know sometimes it can't be helped. But please, as much as we can help it, let's try to get it on our calendars and get there as much as we can, so.
President Matthews, I'll add too, that if there's something that is showing up on your calendar you've been invited to, and you don't really know what it is, or what your role would be there, feel free to reach out to Ms. Lemon or me, and we'll share with you, you know, what we know about the event, and what your role might be. I've appreciated you all who have done that. It lets me know that I need to give you a little bit more information, my friends.
Are there any questions that you guys have on this packet? Hopefully, you've seen it before now, but... All right. We'll move along to our next event on our agenda, and that's proposed policy updates. Dr. Pilch, I'll give it back to you to introduce, but I am assuming Mr. Fall, and I see him coming to the podium now, wants to, wants to give us some updates on these.
And I'll just acknowledge, President Matthews, that I know normally Mr. Fall is not at the podium, giving, you know, he likes a dialogue, he likes a discussion around policy with you all. So I wanna encourage you to do that. We are in this setting tonight to make this, because our second floor is not accessible without our elevator working properly. So that's why we're in this room, and hopefully that'll be repaired soon. The parch is in, we're waiting for the asbestos abatement in the basement to be completed. Mr. Fall, I'll turn it over to you.
Dr. Pilch and members of the board, it's nice to see you all. We are bringing forward a bunch of proposed policy updates, and so, we felt that it was worthwhile to have a discussion about some of these policies, why we are recommending these changes, and hopefully we can answer any questions you might have. You'll have an opportunity for a discussion and to make any amendments during the business meeting later this night. But just know that this is a great opportunity for us to have a conversation. I know it's a little weird with me at the podium, but please feel free to ask questions as they come up. I'm gonna just go through the policies that I was kinda handed from Ms. Lemon, and so we can have a discussion. If it differs from the package that you all received, please stop me, and we can kinda turn to that policy. So just know that there were a number of changes in the law from the last General Assembly session. So we are updating our policies to reflect those changes in the law. Also, as a reminder, you will be repealing a few policies and formally adopting and finalizing those policies on nondiscrimination that we adopted last June. So just be aware of that. The first policy that I wanna touch base with you about is ACA, that's name changes. So ACA came through House Bill 24139, which has been formally codified in statute under 221145 of the Colorado Revised Statutes. And this is requiring school districts to adopt a written policy to accept a student's request to be known as a name that differs from their student's legal name, to reflect the student's gender identity. So under 221145.5, there is specific information that a school district, like District 6, shall implement a written policy outlining how the local education provider will honor a student's request to use a chosen name, and may include a process for including a student's chosen name on school records. A written policy adopted pursuant to this section must comply with the Federal Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, also known as FERPA. So this policy that's in front of you was CASB's model policy. We didn't make any revisions to what CASB provided. Again, with your discussion, and if you have any suggestions, we can go back to the drawing board, because tonight, this will just be a first policy review, and then we'll bring it back for a formal adoption at the later meeting this month. So I'm just not sure if anybody has any questions surrounding this policy. Just know that it is required by law, and this policy, as presented by CASB, I think really does kind of meet the letter of the law pretty succinctly.
Yes, I have a question, Mr. Fall. It's a little ambiguous about parental contact in the policy. And I know that there are a lot of gray areas out there in regards to these issues. But is there some sort of a standard, and maybe this is more a question for the superintendent, is there a standard procedure in the district in regards to parent contact when a student wants to use a different name? And a lot of the time, it's an innocent situation. So a kid goes by Bobby instead of Robert. But it's still a little ambiguous at times, so I don't know if he can address that.
I can answer that, and then, Dr. Pilch, if you have anything to add. So, as I've mentioned to this board, we're not in the business of secret keeping. There are obligations under FERPA to provide records to parents when they request them, and if there has been a name change in a student's record, we must produce that record. You know, there may be a legitimate welfare or safety concern with some children that will come on a case-by-case basis, where maybe it's not appropriate to right away, reach out to the family, but our goal is to always bridge the gap between the family and the student, and hopefully we can kinda get everybody on the same page when a request is made. It is a very gray area, and there are a lot of kind of angles that a certain request will go. But for the most part, most of our requests have come with parental knowledge. It's really the parents that are making this request, more than anything. But not to hypothesize, but you can imagine there might be a situation where a student comes forward, and there might be a legitimate welfare concern if we immediately reach out to the family. But there's no outward obligation, according to this law, that you reach out to the family. But of course, we do wanna bring families on board and get kinda everyone together.
I think the one piece maybe that you're asking that we didn't touch on yet is, what is our practice with our building administrators? That, and so we do a lot of work with our building administrators around our practices related to this. And I think they have a good understanding of our procedures and our protocols, and they understand the importance of partnering with parents and working with parents. And also, at the same time, there are some extreme cases where we do have to consider the safety of the child.
Any other questions on that? So moving on to ACR 1. Again, as a reminder, this is gonna be a policy that you will be repealing the old version, and then formally adopting this version. There's nothing new here, except for what you see in purple, and this is just language that aligns directly with that name change law that we just talked about. Okay, we can keep moving. The next one is Policy GBJ, this is Personnel Records and Files. This also, these revisions also are coming through a change in law. Last year, Senate Bill 24132 was passed. And typically, the process for core, for an open records request is a licensed personnel's evaluation, is not public information. It's only available to the person of interest, that employee. This law has expanded that privilege to unlicensed educators as well. So principals, administrators, special service providers, and education support professionals would also fall into this bucket. So if I, my department receives an open records request for these evaluations, they would be denied unless it was the person in interest who is requesting those records. Does that make sense? Okay, the next bill, or the next policy is IKF. This is graduation requirements. You can see a pretty minor change, but this has great significance that's attached to it. This also came from a bill that was passed that has now been enacted into law. That's House Bill 2417. This is justice-engaged students. So there is a new requirement that schools are to be providing educational services to any student who has been identified as justice-engaged. It is a very broad definition of what student might constitute to be considered justice-engaged. But we are working on developing a bill of rights that will be posted on our website, as well as our district liaison for providing services to these students. We already work closely with Platt Valley, provide students in that system with educational access, but there may be a situation where another student who is justice-engaged may be presently incarcerated for an indeterminate amount of time, may need educational services and ongoing services while they are incarcerated. So, like I said, this- So, like I said, this is a pretty minor change with pretty substantial implications, and we'll just kind of see how this plays out this year. Moving on to Policy JF, Admission and Denial of Admission. These are really more minor edits that were provided by CASB that we felt the board needed to approve. There are some times where we make technical edits if we see a spelling error that we don't bring forward to the Board of Education, but kind of given these minor changes here, we felt that it was appropriate to bring in front of the board. Okay, the next policy is JIH. That's Student Interviews, Searches, and Arrests. This is tied into that Justice Engaged Students policy, so these changes are really reflective of changes to the law, and really specifically on page three around doing searches in a private area and out of sight of other students or doing interrogations out of the presence of other students is, is kind of a key provision for this policy. The next policy is JICDE, Bullying Prevention and Education. This came from a change of law. There was a kind of physical appearances bullying change from last year that came, and so we added in the, the prohibition against bullying on the basis of a student's weight, height, or body size, which we just constitute to be physical appearance. The, the language is really the same as what it was before, except for that one part about physical appearances. All right. And then the last policy is Student Dress Code. Some of these revisions came from a change in law, House Bill 241323. This is for graduation adornments, and you can see kind of those substantive changes on the second and third page, that we are to permit students to wear adornments during graduation that have cultural or religious significance. You know, there is a process, they do still need to comply with the student's dress code, the school's dress code or the district's dress code, and we're requesting, you know, permission in advance just to make sure that they're wearing something that won't cause a material interference with the graduation itself. And then we've also slightly adjusted some of the language on prohibited items related to the affiliation with gang activities in this district. There has been kind of an increase that we've been seeing with gang activity in the community, and this is something that Chief Corliss and his team are really working hard on with schools to address and hopefully get in front of. So we made some kind of more expansive language there, and that is everything. Any questions or comments?
President Matthews, I'll just point out that ACR1 is the policy that you all gave emergency approval to last June, and it's coming back to you tonight then for full approval.
Any questions? I've got one that I never get to, or I never feel right asking when we're, we're doing this in the, in the business meeting. Why are we changing shall to will? I mean, is there, is there a real difference?
Pardon me?
Why are, why do, why do we change shall to will? Is there, is there a real difference there?
You know, this, those, those revisions came from CASB, and, and I think it's stronger language. You know, it really establishes that this is a requirement versus will, which, I mean, we could argue semantics all night, but I think shall is a little bit more, you know, stronger language.
All right. Good to know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fall. All right. We are now to our debrief of the work session, and since we started with Mr. Azari, we'll start with Dr. Campus Betsy.
So thank you, Nate, Nate, for going through all those with us. That was very helpful. Yeah, just wanted to say I'm excited for this school year to start, and, well, now I belong to other boards, this is the most fun board, and the only board where I get really cute drawings from children that say that they love me, and don't worry, be happy. So that doesn't happen with others, with the other board work. But yes, again, thank you for going through all those policy updates with us, Nate.
I would agree. Thank you to Counselor Fall for always keeping us updated, and he does it in a way that makes us want to listen as well to. So I really appreciate what you do, and that's pretty much what I've got. A lot of things coming up. I've got a work schedule that I've got to get adjusted so that I can attend some of these.
Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, thanks for, Nate, always going through all these and keeping us in line. It's nice to know we're in compliance with the, with the state and federal laws, just so we're not at a, a risk, but I think this year I'm going to try to dive into policy a little more than I have in the past. You know, I really just don't want to get where we're carbon copying the federal and the state government and kind of fine tune our district for our community, but I don't know if that's the case or not. I'm not making accusations, but it seems like the majority of them are just keeping us in compliance, which is, which is also great, but I think there's some things we could do to fine tune the district in other ways too, so appreciate it and excited to start the year.
Mr. Azari?
Just echoing my colleagues on the board, a lot of legal changes are coming down all the time, it seems, and to update those policies requires a lot of, a lot of work and just kind of being aware of the current climate that's going on throughout the United States and our state in regards to all the different changes in laws. And I'd like to just give a shout out one more time to all the volunteers in this community who put up, who put in so much time to help our students succeed. So, thanks, President Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Azari, and I don't have anything to add. Do appreciate the, the update, Dr. Pilch and, and Mr. Fall. Thank you. It is important that we keep, keep our policies in line with our state law. I mean, this is a help to our, to our, our teachers and to our classified employees, to our administrators, to, to know that they don't have to go through, looking through this big book of Colorado school law, but that they can simply go to our policies and know that our policies reflect the law, and that if they, if they are operating within our policies, they're operating within the law. So we do appreciate the job that you do, Mr. Fall. Thank you for bringing these, both you and Dr. Pilch. And that's all I have tonight. This work session is adjourned, and we'll see everyone back at 6 o'clock for the business meeting.